How's everybody doing?
Good.
Very well.
All right. It is three oh four P M, so we are having official start of our workshop today on Monday, yes, uh, Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty five. All right. Madam Secretary, go ahead and let's get started on our agenda C's.
Okay, um, all agenda items are for consideration and discussion only. So we're gonna start with, um, section five, red ledger item. Uh, M O C report.
How y'all doing everyone?
How you doing?
I'm doing really good, so I'll go ahead and get started with the operations port. Um, this is for October twenty twenty five. We have a total of nine hundred and eighty-three connections. And to the right, we're looking at your sewer connections. We have a total of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight, six hundred and eighty-eight coming from freshwater one. I'm looking at your well. Your well produced seven million one hundred and thirty-two. We built, uh, six million eight hundred and eighty-five, which put us at the ninety-five percent accounted for. Um, we did have ninety, uh, accounts that we're looking for delinquent, forty-eight sewer only delinquent, and we still have one sewer count plugged. The revenue total was a hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-eight with ten cents. We're looking at your waste water treatment plant is operating at thirty-nine percent accounted for or permitted capacity. One of the things tomorrow when y'all do, uh, look at this one, I'm gonna give y'all a little bit, because I know I say these numbers a lot and y'all may not understand what's really going. But when you're looking at the, at the, uh, what your flow is, at what your sewer plant is being treated for, to the right is gonna be your permitted daily for everything that's being tested, and that's the parameters of the number. So to the left, whenever I'm saying everything is looking good, if you see your daily, daily flow of three hundred and seventy-one thousand, your permitted daily is at nine hundred and fifty thousand, so you know your well underneath that number. And it goes on with the others. Um, the other, in saying that, I'll move on to the, uh, to the wastewater treatment plant, how it produced. We'll be looking at your, um, total gallons average, your C L two, which is your flooring, and everything was good on that. Um, and then your D M R, we're always looking at your poli numbers, and that was, uh, well, the parameters once again, as two point oh. And then we do have two accounts that are, um, this is part of the uncollectible accounts that we are now adding. We have two accounts for the total of a hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. That's after deposit was applied, and, um, these are rims. Um, other than that, we have no other uncollectible accounts. And that's all I have here. Let's show that something for me.
Any questions? Thank you, Roland.
Okay, happy Thanksgiving, if I forget.
Oh, okay. Uh, agenda item five B is a comprehensive financial policy, uh, Dr. Nick Ober.
So Mayor and Council, if you recall, when we met with Standard and Poor's, they gave us our rating for certificate of obligations. They asked us whether we had a financial policy. We tell them that we've been working on it. So we worked with an outside consultant, Greg was on the team, the mayor has also read it. And so this is in compliance with our commitment to Standard and Poor's. It sets the groundwork, the foundation for how we will handle our finances. Any questions?
Five C, Penn Comp's backup battery in the amount not to exceed nine thousand twenty-five dollars, general fund, Dr. Nick Ober.
Mayor and Council, thank you, you were, Mayor and Council, I've got Calvin on the call. Dear Calvin, can you hear? We can't hear you.
I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yes. So Calvin is with Penn Comp, and he did an assessment of our battery backup and suggested, actually, highly suggested that we get an updated battery. So Calvin, do you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. Um, so one of the things we try to do on a periodic basis is look at all of the, uh, security for, uh, city and, uh, police department. And on the city side, we noticed that the, the backup device, which is called a data appliance, and the server, that's what is responsible for all the data for the city post. Both of those devices are on, uh, underpowered battery backup. And what it means is that whenever there is a brownout or any kind of outage, that battery backup is unable to sustain the power to those devices, so it will immediately shut down. Translation, everything gets disconnected immediately. But more importantly, the data that's on there, there's potential for it to be corrupt, which means that anytime there's a brownout, anytime there's a knowledge, any power interruption of any kind, every time it shuts down abruptly, means that there's a chance that your data is gonna be corrupted. And because both the server and the battery backup is on the same device, there's double the chance of some, some unrecoverable event happening.
So Calvin, uh, we've had a couple of, you know, abrupt outages, and, uh, to my knowledge, I'm not certain that we, it's been reported that we've had any, uh, problems with that. Is that correct?
No, totally good. So far, so good, yes.
Okay.
So this battery backup, um, how long will that last? This updated one?
What is the line of the battery?
The, 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 the one that we're proposing?
Yes.
Got you. The one that we're proposing, it, it should give you guys a window of anywhere from fifteen minutes to a hundred and twenty minutes. Now, because we, we basically pulled together as much of the information as possible so that we could have something to present to you all, we didn't go through the longer process of getting all of the information over to the, um, experts, if you will, in the field. Because typically, what we would do is we would send all of the specs of the server, the switch, the data appliance, everything that is in that rack back there, um, to electro, electric professionals, and they would break what each one of them requires, and then do the calculation for how long it would last. But based on our experience, based on what we've seen, based on what we know, we feel confident that what we're suggesting for you would give you at a minimum fifty minutes. So what it translates to is anytime there's a brownout, any interruption, if it goes beyond fifty minutes, or it approaches fifty minutes, I should say, what happens is the system will send a signal to the server and tell it, hey, there is no power. We need to gracefully shut down. So it will send a signal to the servers and go through the process of shutting down all of the applications properly, and then shut it down completely. And once that happens, when power is restored, the same signal is sent back to the system telling it, hey, power has been restored, we can come online, and then it sends a signal to turn everything back on.
And what is the lifespan of this kind of system?
Typically, those battery backups will last for anywhere from four to, uh, four to five years. Um, that's typical for, uh, like a workstation or laptop. The, the unit itself can go anywhere for about eight to ten years. So the only thing you would have to replace would be the battery itself, not the unit.
So all of that is in writing, correct?
Have you given us a written proposal on this yet?
I didn't provide a preliminary, yes.
So in that, will you provide that to council? So anything else on this item?
Agenda item five B, Penn Comp's performance of email migration to dot gov in the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars, general fund, Dr. Anick Ober.
So, uh, as you recall, we, our extension for our emails is dot com, and it really should be dot gov. And one of the reasons for the delay was money, it costs money to do the conversion. And so we got a proposal from Penn Comp. We want to do that, it's safer, it prevents people from coming in. And I, I still get emails today asking for an employee, uh, to change his bank account, and it's the same employee, and I think I've gotten a total of seven or eight. So if we have dot gov, it's more secure and the likelihood of that happening is less. And I'll turn it over to Calvin for more information. Calvin?
Yes, so we did, the, we did a similar migration, I believe, back in twenty twenty-three for the police department, and that was before my time. Um, but I believe it was also a dot org address that the P D department had. And in doing this process of moving from a dot org to a dot gov, we've, we're essentially creating a new and unique address that is, uh, monitored and controlled by, at the federal level, as opposed to the public system, which is like your GoDaddy, your network solutions and so forth, which is where your dot org, dot, dot com, and dot net are typically registered. So by doing that, we're, we're greatly increasing the security for the dot, dot gov by migrating under that umbrella. And it also allows the, uh, city side to utilize dot gov, um, licensing through Microsoft, because all of that is, uh, it's essentially provision at a federal level.
And I know we've been having, we've had some issues, because I know last week, Chief got an email supposedly from me.
Oh, yeah, they did.
That was, oh, yeah, Chief got it on before, that, yeah, that, that did not come from me.
So this should increase the security of the city's email, is that correct?
That is, that is correct. It's, it's one of the, it's one of the least cost prohibitive, um, things you can do. The other option would be to stay within the dot org and then add on services like Barracuda. Um, that's always an option still, mind you. But with doing the migration, it gives, it gives the city a clean slate. It gives you also an official dot gov, um, uh, I D. And, uh, that's usually way more trustable than, uh, dot com or, uh, dot org, which is what we currently have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have any other question.
Thank you, Calvin.
You're welcome. Again, uh, sorry for my retarding myself, I was running late from another client.
Five E, uh, purchase from Razos Ben Power Sports of Arcola, Texas, for one twenty twenty-five maximum buck four fifty, a utility terrain vehicle, U T V, for the maintenance department in the amount not to exceed seven thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars, general fund, Dr. Anick Ober.
When we created this budget this year, we made a commitment to the maintenance department, and they have been requesting a new unit for a very long time. And we committed to purchase one. There may be a purchase of second one later, it just depends.
No, it's the main use of that.
Yeah, and I wanted to explain it, because I talked to him about it. This is to carry that, that equipment, when they're going down, like when they go down, like some of these streets where they go down and it's spraying and stuff like that, they're constantly having to pull the, the sprayer and stuff out from the truck down to the road where, with this, it makes it a lot easier. Somebody can ride on that thing and just be spraying and stuff like that. It, it makes their job easier, because, uh, and then let's wear and tear on that vehicle constantly, you know, constantly giving out, yeah. So that's what that's about, yeah.
Five F, repairs to the maintenance trailer in the amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, Mayor B to B Williams.
Yes, and, and that's not to say that this, the repairs will be fifty thousand dollars, but they have a leaking roof over there. Uh, that trailer needs some care given to it. Uh, they have, we've had to fix the A C, both A C units had gone out, so we had to take care of that. Uh, they didn't even have, uh, sewer connection over there. Uh, they, we had to have somebody come and, you know, pull it out of a plastic box every month. And one of the commo, they couldn't even use one of the restrooms, because it's not connected. So it's, it's time to put some effort in. They are a part of this city, and we wouldn't be, we wouldn't want to be in that situation. So it's time to put some, uh, you know, some investment into the, the maintenance department. And so that, we made that commitment, like, uh, Dr. Harvey said, and, and we just want to, uh, improve those conditions over there.
Agenda items six, plants, plaques, and permits. A, Glendale Lake preliminary plaque of Fort Bend County Mud, number one forty-one, water plant number two, City of Arcola, E T J, Fort Bend County, Texas, Mr. Lawrence Turner, Kaluza Inc.
Good afternoon, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, this is a, uh, preliminary plaque that's by Fort Bend County Mud, one forty-one, water plant number two. It's basically doing the planning portion on a two-and-a-half acre track. Uh, this prepared to attack the ranch, it's good, it's located in the east and, uh, and it's along a future road on the west side. It's a future road, uh, that will be constructed, and it's south of the, uh, excuse me, two-hundred-foot wide east hill. And again, this is a preliminary plan, it'll come back, put to, find to the council as well, and staff recommend approval of this preliminary plaque. And that concludes my report on this item.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Now we're down to agenda item seven, contracts and agreements. Mayor, um, Mrs. Turner has to hop off early, do you mind if I go see his item?
I can have it off, go ahead.
Uh, to approve the street rehab project for the following streets, Hubble Street, Peach Street, Red Street, Short Street, West Davis Street, and North Street, which includes engineering and surveying services with Kaluza Inc., and the amount not to exceed four hundred and eighty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars, certificates of obligation, Mr. Lawrence Turner, Kaluza Inc.
Uh, good afternoon, and so on this particular item here, uh, it's actually preparing bid documents, it's a construction documents for the streets that have been listed. Uh, once off the road, we'll put together the construction documents and look at going out for bids on this project, uh, probably, just because you don't really want to do something in December because of the holidays, so we'd probably go out for bids in January. Uh, and then once going out for bids in January, by February, come back to council and make a straw works charting shortly thereafter, after council award. While there, any questions anybody have with me as it relates to that contract?
Who inspected those streets?
I did.
Who inspected?
Okay, uh, I understand, Mayor, you inspect streets, and I have no problem with repairing street repair. I'm a big proponent of street repair. Uh, I love these smooth streets, and I just wonder why Honey Grove wasn't one of those streets to put on there?
Because there are a million other streets in the city that need to be repaired too. There's only so many we can do at a time, and the area down on Sears area, that, that area hasn't had any investment in it for a very long time. So I chose to do that area first. Uh, I, I want my street done too, but, uh, it won't make this list. So that's, that's, that's how it came out.
I rode some of those streets today, where I rode all of them, to tell you the truth. I noticed on Gray Street, there was two potholes, and I really think they need to be fixed, but the overall street was in fair condition.
Well, it doesn't matter whose inspection, your inspection, my inspection. These are, these are the streets that's on the agenda for, uh, approval and for a vote. And Honey Grove will make the next risk if there's, you know, when we come about the street repairs.
Well, Honey Grove has promised twice.
I've never promised anything to anybody.
Oh, you, you, you told those, the neighbors that, that's why they was wondering why, because they saw the agenda.
I don't know your name.
Well, let me ask you something, on Howell Street. Is you talking about Howell, the, the Howell or the private Howell? There are two Howells.
We're talking about Howell, Howell, Howell.
Not the private portion, you got part of Howell down there, it's private, private street.
Our, our, our police officers have to go down there and they have to respond to calls.
So we're gonna fix the private street?
They have to respond to calls down there, and I almost tore up a car vehicle trying to get down there.
I do understand that, but that does not make that a city street.
The streets that are on the agenda for approval are the ones that are listed.
We, we are repairing private streets, that's all I'm asking. It's a private street.
We're repairing the streets that are on the agenda.
Howell, the one that goes down there, the one that police complained about, I understand, I'm walking, driving and everything. It's a private street.
Do we service it?
It's a private street.
Do we service it?
No, because the garbage man, they have to bring their garbage all the way out to Howell Street to bring, to put them garbage. The metal band don't even go down there. It's a private street.
So you're saying the city does not service it?
What I'm saying is a private street.
Okay.
Do we fix public or do we fix private?
We fix what the city uses. If the city has to use this street, and our cars are pretty expensive, if they have to go down there for a break-in for anything, we need to be able to service it without telling about, uh...
Okay, listen.
The police might have.
What is, what is on the agenda is what is gonna be voted on. And it includes Howell Street, all parts of Howell Street that our police officers have to go down and utilize. Period, point blank, Mr., you can take that up on your Facebook page.
No, not talking about Facebook. I'm, I'm, I'm asking the, I thought, the children question by saying, hey, it's a private street.
You're having to be argumentative, Mr. Burden.
I'm not being argumentative.
Uh, okay, yes, all parts of Howell, I told you that.
I'm asking, including the private side.
We are including all parts of Howell Street. Well, I don't know what you don't understand about that, all Howell Street will be repainted.
Our, our police officers use those streets, so, and it's in our best interest to repair the streets where it won't tear up cars.
I get all that, but it's a private street. I get all that.
We're gonna do it then, okay.
Well, I mean, you got your votes, I'm just saying.
Well, you just want to vote.
I'm not worried about my one vote, I'm just saying what's right.
Okay, let's move on. If you have any more questions?
Seven, eight, contract with Ron Cox Consulting.
We had such a great meeting last week, last month.
Contract with Ron Cox Consulting for governance and planning sessions to formulate a strategic plan not to exceed twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, general fund, Mayor Pro Tim Breck, A. Bar.
Yeah, this item came up, uh, when, um, we were working on the, uh, financial comprehensive plan. Um, and then Michael, and one of the things that was, uh, actually mentioned in the comprehensive financial plan was to have a city comprehensive plan. And this comprehensive plan has been brought up a number of times throughout the years. But in the past, you know, the cost of that plan was literally in the tens of thousands of dollars. And the city just couldn't afford that. Um, but Michael Hugans recommended Ron Cox and said that he's done a lot of consulting, and he's actually our consultant that does our tours reports for the city. And he recommended that I contact him and, and see what, if there's anything he could do, because he's done comprehensive plans for a large number of cities in Texas. Uh, so I did contact him and, uh, asked him for a proposal. And, uh, the proposal was in your packet. But the cost of that, generating that plan and actually putting together, uh, implementing that plan, uh, was twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which was much, much less than what the city council has been told in the years past.
How much was that?
It was literally over a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, my God.
And of course, I'm not gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars for, for a written document.
And plus, uh, a lot of the times when we go out for federal, uh, if we ever go out for federal, uh, funds, they require a strategic or comprehensive plan. And we just found out last week during the mayor's meeting, we hosted here at the City of Arcola, and we hosted also the, uh, director of the, of C D G, Community Development. She said that we could actually go out for, uh, funding to extend our sewer and water lines where they don't now exist, for people who are maybe coming in in the future to try to build homes and stuff. We could go ahead and, uh, extend, we could apply for funds for that, so, uh, that would be a great.
And also, if we ever want to do zoning for the city in the future, you have to have a comprehensive plan to be able to do zoning. So there's a number of things that kind of line up on being able to do this comprehensive plan. Um, and Ron will actually come in and interview all of council and get your ideas on what the future of the City of Arcola should look like. He will come in and also interview all the city staff to be able to get their ideas before he puts together this, and formulates this plan. And then he'll meet with us and figure out a way of implementing this plan going forward. So I thought it, it sounded like a pretty good deal, and, um, you know, I think it would be a very positive thing for the city.
Agenda item seven C, approve a cost sharing agreement for the extension of water and sewer lines to property located at fifty-four twenty-four Ladona Street. The owner's responsibility is estimated at thirteen thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars fifty-nine cents, which includes the cost of the water and sewer tap fees. The City of Arcola's cost sharing amount is nine thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars fifty-nine cents in surprise fund, Mayor B to B Williams.
Yeah, this, um, this issue, they, we had a couple of, uh, residents who were given information that said that we had water and sewer lines available where they were trying to build. Part of while, we ended up having, we were modifying the processes that were going on here at the city is because they were sending maintenance guys out to, to say whether or not there was water or sewer taps available. And we need our M O C, our operators to actually, in fact, that's what our ordinance said, that we should do. Our, our, uh, our operators are to go out there to, to see about locating the water line. Well, there... Well, there are a couple of people were told through permits that they, that the water line or sewer line was available. Come to find out, it's not, it was gonna cost this particular resident thirty-one thousand dollars and something to run the lines to where he needed to go. According to our ordinance, we can also engage in a cost sharing uh, fine agreement with uh, these residents when, when the costs go up like that. And because the city of Arcola gave them that information, we need to somehow, yeah, yeah. We need to uh, share in some of that cost and so uh, and so that we talked to our, the city attorney, the chief, Carl, was talking back and forth with him and basically, we decided to, he's gonna have to pay half of the cost plus all the cost for uh, the tax fees and would bring his cost up to thirteen thousand, chief, how did that, how did that end up, how did that end up? Because it was gonna be like thirty-one thousand dollars, so I think.
So we reduced it to like twenty-three, I believe.
Oh yeah, we, we talked to the operator.
We talked it down and so they're gonna have to pay thirteen, we're gonna pay ninety.
Okay, they agree?
But that's only twenty-three thousand.
Yeah, we reduced it down to twenty-three because a large portion of it was traffic control.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and so we were able to um, have one of the officers will be able to do the traffic control. And so it went down to twenty-three, so they will be able to pay their, they have agreed, they have seen the agreement. They like, they agreed to being thirteen and the city can.
And we had one other one, uh, that I think it was five thousand dollars. Uh, and because it was within uh, the uh, mayor's authority, I went ahead and I said I was necess, I was definitely gonna make sure y'all knew about that, that uh, hers was uh, a little bit more, I think she ended up having to pay seven thousand and something dollars and we're, we're gonna pay five. But those are the only ones that were doing that because they were giving
City told them incorrect information.
And so um, and so we, we're not, as of today, there will be no more that we, we're going to engage in that. We're gonna try to uh, extend those lines and find, get funding to extend those lines. But until, because we cannot engage in, in that. People sometimes have understanding, when you go to build a home and stuff like that, there are other costs that come up that we don't really know about upfront. We are not trying to come out here and uh, we're not trying to put any cost on the city and we're gonna, we're trying to be fair. And if the city gave them misinformation, we're gonna take the onus on that and.
Just let them know the process too has changed, that we have changed the process. So when they do water sewer checks now, M O C is doing the water sewer check, but we are doing the water sewer check and giving them a quote of what it's gonna cost before we tell them anything.
And was that quote written? It was like a contract type deal or just like word of mouth?
Initially.
Yeah, initially.
So initially, they didn't receive a quote, what they initially received was just basic information for water and sewer tap. And then we, they went out for a quote and it came back with that amount, so they. So now we have uh, burbage that we're gonna be putting on um, the new uh, website that we have the permanent website as a disclaimer. Yeah, in um, in the process, the entire process has changed, so they won't have an amount until we actually get the quote back. Is when they will actually get the amount that they have to pay.
And one thing we found is even when M O C went out there, they have the mapping and all of that and where the lines are supposed to be. But when they went out there to do it, guess what? The lines weren't out there. So I went out there one day and I was like, what is happening? I think it was on Main, they had three big holes dug up trying to find the line. And so uh, we gotta also get an accurate uh, county of really where all those lines are. And uh, that, and I was told by some of the engineers that sometimes, yeah, that happens, even the M O C said sometimes that happens all the time, but the lines shouldn't change, so. We like, we're making sure, we're gonna make sure that they have uh, access where they are. Moving to Agenda Item Eight, Ordinance and Resolution. Eight A, A Resolution to uh, the City of Council of the City of Arcola, Texas Authorizing City Staff to Submit a Proposal To the Fort Bend County Community Development Department for the Funding of Eligible HUD C D B G Dash C V Projects, Miss Facility Grants.
Oh wow, I didn't realize I was on there. Um, this is basically money that was left over from COVID that was part of a larger pot, then they have like, well, almost two, like one point nine million dollars left. And so they're allocating to different projects. And the process was fairly easy, not as much as you normally have to do. But we have to have a resolution from City Council, which can go in after the grant. And so that's basically what it is. I think that we applied for like three hundred thousand to do a project within that scope of like five months. And um, that's basically the scope of it. And it's a project that's based on like food insecurities, health, it's, it's connected around health and wellness. But food insecurities and stuff like that, education, all those different type of things like wellness classes, just a variety of things to make up a packet that, well, mostly food insecurity, especially with the stuff that's been happening with snap and food with different populations, so we really wanna make sure that we are able to provide that. And we can partner with other people in order to do those type of things.
So they have to go through like an application?
No, they don't because Arcola is over the fifty percent to be eligible for that type of funding. So our whole, our whole area, almost a whole two point, whatever miles is eligible. Because we're below, we are above the fifty percent. We're not gonna be for much longer, but right now we still are.
And anytime that actually, anytime, you know, on the normal circuit, anytime we apply for a grant, we will always bring it before this body first. It's just that this was an emergency thing and they said, we had to have a deadline. So, and even at this point, if, if council says, no, we don't want that grant, you know what? We will politely tell them that we will not, we will rescind the application, so. Please know that we value the process and bringing these things to the council beforehand. Yeah, I, I know, but I'm just, I'm just letting you know that.
Okay, we, we are open to whatever council uh, chooses.
Agenda Item Eight B. A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Apply for Grants on Behalf of the City of Arcola, Texas Through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, Dr. Annette Goldberg.
We're just gonna go ahead and table that.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, because we gotta, we, we need to come before, we need to come before council on any grant.
Uh, A C. An Ordinance Adopting the Twenty Twenty One International Code Published by the International Code Council Including the Twenty Twenty One International Property Maintenance Code And the Twenty Twenty Three National Electric Code, Erica Carr, Police Chief.
This is just updating our um, building codes and uh, property uh, maintenance code. We're actually adopting that, um, Safe Bill has asked us to adopt that to help with some of the code enforcement issues that we are having in the city. Um, and so with that, we wanted to update everything, um, our building codes we have prior to twenty fifteen. So we wanted to come up to date with that and make sure everything was um, up to date. We will still include the Twenty Twenty One Fire um, Code in the Twenty Eighteen Existing Building Code. Will all be adopted as one with this, with this ordinance.
That's just like the companies, right? Like the restaurants and?
And yeah, it's mostly uh, like your commercials, some of your residential as well. Um, the existing building would be like for commercial buildings that already are, have been here. Um, they don't have to go back because we wouldn't want them to have to change all their stuff to twenty twenty-one. They just go back to twenty eighteen um, to make sure they're up to date.
And like some of the senior citizens and stuff, do you like go and see if they have like uh, fire detectors or, or uh,
I think the fire department is working on something, uh, Chief Bates called me, he probably, um, I think they had someone out that was sending out uh, fire alarms.
They don't have to ask, it'd just be like a?
Yeah.
They're just calling in or?
Yeah, and if you know of any seniors that have problems that need fire alarms, the protection system, just have them call, call us. And we will um, get with the fire department to see what programs they have available, if we can find to get in assistance.
CO2, that's what I think it's called.
Carbinon side.
Carbinon side.
And so just remember with carbon monoxide, you have to have some type of gas running through your house. If it's all electric, you really don't have to worry about carbon monoxide.
Agenda Item D. To amend Ordinance Number O Dash Twenty Twenty Four Dash Twelve Dash Zero Zero One Two Of the City of Arcola Fee Schedule Provided for Repeal, Provided for Servability and Provided Any Effective Date, Mayor B W Williams and Police Chief Carl Corrigan. Oh, I think on this one, yes, David, what'd you say? Yeah, I think on this one, um, we're gonna, we're gonna table this because what we need to do is we, we need to revisit our, our fee schedule. Um, we, we have engaged in a beautification project around here and we want our residents to be able to fix their homes and maintain their homes and stuff and so uh, I, you know, we were looking at it and it doesn't make sense for some of these things for us to be charging fees or permit fees on, uh, if we want them to clean up. And we, although we reduce the fees early on, uh, we've talked to other cities and, you know, when it comes to maintaining, uh, you know, they don't necessarily charge fees. And so we may wanna look at, I, I thought that was great because we want our citizens to, to maintain.
They got an email too, remember, from Missouri City? Because we were trying to, we're trying to say, we're trying to Missouri City.
Yeah, I don't get that, I don't get that, but that's the, and also, we, we have to look at understanding too that commercials, uh, we need to look at, I know somebody said we, we, we shaking down businesses in this city. We're not shaking down businesses, you know, for a long time, businesses are, are supposed to pay an annual fee to do business in any city. Every city around the world does that. But Arcola, the county hadn't been doing it for a very long time and now that Arcola is growing, I think one of the reasons why uh, a fire marshal was brought in is for that purpose and so businesses, I understand they haven't been being charged an annual fee, but that's just the cost of doing business in place. There are annual fees, there are some businesses that pay more than others because they may have combustible material uh, and stuff like that that they have to pay for and so one of the things that we, we, we want them to understand and we're not trying to uh, we're not trying to run our city on the backs of our business. What we wanna do is we want it to be safe though, too.
Right.
There's a, there's a safety issue, that's one of the reasons why the fire marshal is here, is supposed to be here. And so what we wanna do is review our, review our fee, fee schedules for uh, comparable adjustments where there need to be uh, adjustments. But also to look out for our residents to make sure that they're able to maintain and keep this city in a place where we can have, you know, get it to a place where we can have pride when we drive down our streets, every street in the city of Arcola.
Well, shouldn't we be in alignment with other cities for our fee charging? Why when you're a smaller city with the highest prices?
We are in alignment with other uh, cities.
With Missouri City, we're not?
When we.
Now with Sugar Land, we're not?
When we look at the fee schedule, uh, the fire marshals look at.
We have, I can answer that. We don't, we have to stay in line with the smaller city. We don't have the same infrastructure as Missouri City or as Sugar Land, so with those, with that being said, we don't have the same infrastructure, so with that being said, our prices are not going to be the same as Missouri City or Sugar Land. They have a different infrastructure than the city of Arcola has.
Their population is so much larger, we, we not even quite three thousand.
If, if we can afford to do private roads, I don't need to hear that about in alignment with the, you know, other streets, I'm saying that we, we going against the people that have been doing business here all these years. And now all of a sudden, we like, it's like a shake down, you just gonna go down and just get, instead of getting a warning. I brought him in, I didn't tell him to come in, I, I, I brought him in, right, for what I brought him in for, and I told him, and I told him.
Okay, 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 Mr. Burden, Mr. Burden, let, let him.
And I told him when he got here, what we, we're not gonna be.
You are out of order, as always.
Well, we're not gonna be.
Chief Carr, can you please? He was brought in under your administration to deal with the businesses because Fort Bend County was not dealing with them. We have had several meetings with the businesses to let them know that, hey, this was coming down the pipe. We did, we sent out letters, we went door to door talking. I have went with the fire marshal personally and went and talked to these businesses to let them know, hey, Warpin County wasn't here doing this, but we have to make sure these citizens in the city are safe, the people that visit your business are safe. We have businesses here that store things that they, they shouldn't be storing. And if something happens, that's a liability to the city. Because the next, that person could come into the city and say, hey, you have this business, you have this business to run in your city. So that's why this is the way we're doing the things now.
Not only that, I believe that what the fire marshal was told is to wait until the next administration come in in order to implement this stuff. So that is really what the fire marshal was doing, what you brought it in to do in the first place. And now.
The fire marshal.
You told him to wait until my administration to implement it, so to make it seem like I'm the one who's doing it. Nevertheless, we are implementing the policies that were put in place for the safety of all and for, to keep down lives.
The fire marshal was brought in because it was taking Fort Bend County's too long to come in here and do inspections of these buildings, of these businesses as they needed. They would sit here and wait two and three months, waiting on Fort Bend to get here. You wanna know why the fire marshal brought in? To expedite those circumstances a lot faster and quicker. It wasn't to come in here, and I never told him, wait on the next administration to come in, I don't know where that lie come from, because you never run to lose, you always run to win, so I would never say, wait on the next administration, if you think you're gonna be here. So, then another thing, that's why he brought him in.
All right, A C.
Thank you very much.
To amend Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty Three Dash Zero Three Dash One Four. Rate Order Related to Water and Sewer Fees to Include Delinquency Guide Guidance And Establishing a Fee for Illegal Connection to the City, City's Utility, Mayor B W Williams. What is this, what'd you say?
I think somebody was.
Oh, yeah, um, so the rate, the, the order is to, the, the council needs to uh, set some clear guidelines for uh, M O C as to when accounts are to be, the length of accounts are to be cut off. We, we really need to sound and talk about this, yeah, I know this was disgusting for, but we can save three months, but if we're talking sewer, that's, that's sixty dollars. And for sixty dollars, we're gonna go and plug or, or, or cap and it's gonna cost the city eight hundred dollars. You know, to go out there to do that. And, and then, then that's gonna be cost, that's gonna be, you know, put onto the, the residents. So we need to find a way of how we are going to go about this and give M O C some clear guidance on how we're gonna move forward with water and sewer. And then when those people who are tapped into this city's utilities illegally, there, we have to establish what that fee is going to look like because we, we cannot yet. It is, it has been happening. I, I don't know if y'all saw a big thing on the news in, in Houston. It, it's happening in Houston as well. And we, we need to find a way to uh, address it because it, it's, again, it's a safety issue.
Well, now, okay, if they got a cap and there's somebody else uses it, that'll make that bill go up, right? Is that when we notify, I mean, like, you're pulling, you're gonna be pulling too much though, right? It's like electricity, if you hook.
That's with water, that may work like that, may not necessarily with sewer.
So you don't think electricity?
We have kind of a flat rate with sewer, up to a certain amount.
So you're gonna do the sewer?
They can do the sewer. If you, but how would you catch them?
Well, as we are going out and there are issues coming up, we are, we are, we are finding it and so.
So you found a lot of that out, really?
Well, we found more than we need to.
Really? Wow. Like what section of our code? Really? Wow. Like, what section of our code?
But, but at any rate, yeah, so we, we, those are things that, that, and, and look, we may not necessarily be able to vote on this tomorrow because that seems like we have an answer, but this is something that we need to address. If that company is a trauma.
Yes.
Yeah. And so that will be it. But let me, let me say something. Y'all listen. And, and Mr. Burton, uh, I know you can leave, we're not done just yet.
I, I.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Not you, not me, no matter.
My fault. Uh, but on the meeting, when we have a meeting tomorrow, with, we, this is the day we can get all this, whatever, how. But on our meetings going forward, I, at some point, I want Arcola to be professional in its meetings and stuff. If you, I understand that, you know, it, it's not gonna always be one person's way and, and then burn down the city, everything else if it doesn't go our way. In these meetings, they need to be professional. This is what we are doing. We are doing cities' business. And if we're gonna reset decorum, uh, ordinance, every time we start a meeting, that meeting, and if it gets out of order, I will, I'm telling you right now, I will have people move from this, from the, from the dice. We, we're not gonna do that. I'm not gonna do this every time. You know, if you got a problem with, I know you got a problem, try to come to this meeting and give some positive feedback on something. Everything that we've been doing, been positive all out throughout the city. And every time, there's a negative comment about it, everything, everything is negative. You all, we are all here on this council, supposed to be working on behalf of the city. And if you don't wanna work on behalf of the city, get off the council. It's just that easy.
It is.
It is.
It's just that easy.
It is. I agree with you.
So, it, so if, if, if we have problems tomorrow, Chief Carr, please let your officer know. To be ready to take anybody out that continues to be out of order in this meeting. I'm just, it, it's just as simple as that. All right.
Careful.
Ain't no care, ain't no, careful. I'm, 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 I'm gonna be in charge of these meetings and I'm gonna have some order and decorum.
Nobody said you're not in charge of the meeting. You are in charge of it, but you should be able to accept somebody that has something.
At the time of three fifty-six P. M.